4:30 PM sharp on this fine Wednesday, September 5, 2018. If you would please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm a little hard of hearing today because my ears clog with water from the duck die still. So if I can't hear you to my right, just speak up.
It's a radius or some shit.
Okay, so, good afternoon. Let's begin our council meeting, please, with a roll call.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Greg Giel.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hanks.
You got my back if they give me a hard time. Thank you, Lyle. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda that is before you. There are no changes that need to be made. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Giel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Thank you. And now, number two on our agenda, public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? How are ya? It's been awhile. Please step up. Share your name with us.
This is just Bob Engel, and this is just kind of a repeat performance.
Encore. We'll say encore performance.
Encore. Good idea. Earlier, I was, I noticed in the paper this, today, there was a, on the opinion page, there was a nice article regarding the event center and, and stuff. And then I got to the last page where we had the city budget for the month. And you, if you recall, earlier I asked one day if, if it would be possible, like you do for the library and the museum and the park and, all of those, if you could have a separate category that would show for the
Events Center.
Event Center. And I was told you could. I guess today, my question is, would you do this?
Sure.
Okay.
We have, we show that separately, do we not? We do not show that one yet?
No.
But we get them in our pavilion?
No, because it's part of the general fund.
Oh, okay. We, but we get the reports when we go to the pavilion for our board meeting?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yeah, because as the opinion said, you know, we've got 239,000 in income, 253 in expenses, and a $14,000 deficit. And the only thing I saw in the, on the budget side of it was
Sure.
there was $50,000 income. So, with, and there was nothing shown for expenses anyplace. So, from just looking at that, you're doing very well if you can have 50,000 income and no expenses.
Thank you. But you'd like to see the, the breakdown of that?
I would like to see the breakdown.
And we do see that at the board. We'll visit about that, because I don't, I don't know yet, right? How we can
It's just, it makes a lot of room for error on our part in the office, because it's included in all of the city bills, kind of like the pool is, and the rec is, and the cemetery. They don't, the event center doesn't actually have their own separate checking account, like the other boards and commissions do. That's how that's a little bit easier to separate out.
Well, I also assume that the board out there, that they have an itemized record.
They do, because they've requested it.
And, but that is not, that doesn't have to be printed, is that right?
Because it's part, because it's part of the city's portion of the bills. It's included in that overall, so, so for example, it's, in, under the city's bill list, it might say Baumgart's $500, you know, that we paid, and maybe 100 of that was part of the pavilions.
Yep.
So then on their report, it shows that $100, but it also, the $500 also may encompass water, it might encompass sewer, you know. So it's gonna take a lot of jockeying for us to do it.
Well, like, like last winter, one time, I drove by there on a Saturday, and the city was out there moving snow. Now, I imagine if you hired somebody to go on, to go out there, I, I presume that doesn't show up. Is that right? Or has that broke down?
No, the, when the city forces are out there, that's just voluntary, in-kind labor, so to speak. We're not currently contracting snow removal services there. We do contract lawn mowing.
Okay, but, the way I look at it is, from a, from a taxpayer's standpoint, that we've got a $5 million facility out there, and we're showing 239,000 of income, $250,000 worth of expense. And I, I think if that is shown up in here, I, I hope I'm not the only person, I don't think I am, that, that look at these things. But I think if, if it's itemized out, somebody in town might come, come forward and say, "I'm looking at these expenses."
Sure.
And if you did this, you could save some money, and
Then we can show that to you?
Yeah.
Or like Ange just said, that's something she could email you. Tonight, we have a 6 o'clock meeting at the Crossroads Pavilion. You could come see.
Yeah, if
You know, if you want to come out to the meeting.
If it's just, if it's just for me, it's a waste of time. But if it's for the, you know, for more people to see it, why then there's a benefit to it.
Do we put that in the book that we share, or do we just have council agenda stuff in there? Like our
Well, there's all the expenses. I looked through the book, there's all it, but I don't know what the codes are.
That's the overall, general.
Yeah, I don't know what the codes are. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. But we'll visit more then if, if you, if needed. Thank you. 6 o'clock, though, Crossroads Pavilion, we have our board meeting. You're welcome to come out, and we'll have the breakout there, too. Okay. Um, thank you for that. Are there any other public comments? I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. Okay, double check in. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so we will move forward then into the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, the line, consideration of approval of mayor's appointments. Larry Meyer would like to continue his appointment on the Recreation Trails Committee. And then also, we have the consideration for the recreation weather policy. Jake is here, if there are any questions regarding that policy.
Is this a new policy, or just a reiteration of what we had before?
Want to come on up, Jake, and walk us through real quick?
Um, yeah, so this is completely new. We had some issues this summer with, how do we, what do we cancel? Because we don't have anything set forth. Um, you know, there's some parents that don't want to play in rain, and there's some that do. So we try to make sure that we now have something in place, and parents know what our expectations are for recreation and when to cancel, and where to get your information at, too, is, as well. So confusion is what we're trying to get rid of, and I, hopefully, this solves all that, so.
Right. Just a better
And consistent.
Consistency. Consistency, too, yep.
Okay, good.
So, no, there wasn't one before. So now we're just putting one in place, being consistent, communicating, but it also provides the information to those parents of, if there is a cancellation, this is where it's announced.
Yep, yep. And it'll be in everyone's schedules and rosters, so everyone will have that information as well
Right.
on the weather policy, so.
Thank you. Okay. So with that in mind, consent agenda. Thank you, Jake. Any other questions or explanation? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that. Support.
Thank you. Last request, any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, we will consider a scope of services plan from RDG Planning and Design. Kurt's gonna share a little bit of information that he has. The SCDC Executive Committee has met on that. He's talked with Mike Bell. I believe there's information before us. But Kurt will walk us through a little bit, and then we'll talk about the, the cost share.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Just a quick background, as you guys know, Sheldon Crossing, you know, we acquired that ground a number of years ago. And when we acquired it, through proper planning, we figured out phase type of development on what we need to do to ultimately develop that ground. Since, since then, we've developed it into residential, most recently into multifamily with Eagle Construction Project and the Event Center Project. What sits out there today, that is considered undeveloped ground for Sheldon Crossing, is the 40 acres of community park, which consists of the pond and adjacent green space around it. There's been some preliminary discussions over the years on how we develop that, what it's gonna look like. I know there's been some talks already in the Park and Rec Board, you know, is it playground equipment, is it shelter house? The Trails Committee has ideas on trail development and situat, you know, stuff like that, some other amenities within there. It, it's a pretty key development for Sheldon because of its visibility. And we want to make sure, our SCDC has talked at length about this and proper planning, we want to make sure that we, we do the right steps necessary to make sure that we, we think through it, and to make sure that when the ultimate project is completed, that we're happy with it. So what you have in front of us, SCDC kind of gave the green light direction to, let's figure out RDG Planning and Design, who worked with us through the Event Center Project, what the cost preliminary would be to get us from where we're at today, to ultimately get us to a big picture of what we want this, what we want this community park to ultimately look like. So the, the scope of services is in front of you. What it will get us is, again, it'll get us a final proposal in place with estimated costs, so it'll get us some preliminary estimated costs that we can use. It'll develop those 40 acres, including the pond and green space. And the biggest thing that we're gonna get out of this, and working with an architect through this, through the, through the development, is it's gonna get us a preliminary cost, an estimated cost, that we can then use to leverage grant dollars. If you remember, when we went back with the, the Crossroads Pavilion Event Center, painting that picture was huge down in Vision, Iowa, because we were able to show them the big picture. And part of the big picture with the Event Center Project was ultimately developing the 40 acres of community park, which sits adjacent to it. So we'll get those preliminary cost estimates, we can use those as far as leveraging grant dollars. And then ultimately, we're trying to figure out if and when we want to move forward with the project, specifically with paying for it, what's it gonna cost us? And number two, do we want to maybe formalize a fundraising component of the project, which we could consider with this one as well? So help us leverage grant dollars, also help us leverage fundraising component if we want to go down that road. It also then takes all 40 acres, lets us throw everything against the wall, what do we want this park to look like? Through the scope of services, it also will bring invol, involvement with the community, because there's two community open houses there as well. So we want to for sure get our community input with this project. And then we'll be working directly with Mike Bell, RDG, to kind of walk us through the whole process, and get us to a point where we have a whole plan in place, then we can pull the trigger when we're ready as a city. When we're, budget-wise, we feel comfortable in moving forward with the project, whether we want to fundraise it, we'll go for grant dollars, or how much the city's willing to contribute at that point. So in saying that, the scope of services is an hourly rate through RDG, with a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. What SCDC is proposing to you today is that they will split those costs 50/50 with the city, similar to what we did with the preliminary design with the Event Center, and go forward. And if we would decide to pull the trigger, if the council says, "Yeah, let's, let's move forward," I would envision us calling RDG and getting the process moving sooner than later. So happy to answer any questions that anybody may have, and
Yep. One question that always comes up is, if our share's 10,000, you know, where, where do we pull that out of our budget for the city's portion? And that's something I had talked to Ange about, and we always tend to say, "Lost, we'll just take it from lost." But Ange did bring up a good point. So where might those funds be able to come from?
Uh, be the Parks Future Development Account.
And we have how much in that right now? Sorry?
Plenty.
Plenty. Don't tell everybody how much.
I don't like to give numbers, because then people think of other ways to spend it.
Right, exactly. So there is money in the budget right now?
No.
For, sorry?
No.
It's not budgeted.
It's not budgeted money. There's no budgeted money.
But there's money that's set aside?
There's money that gets transferred into the park fund for future
There you go.
park, but nothing is budgeted to be spent.
Right, we didn't budget it, but there is funds there.
Yes.
Thank you for correcting me.
It would take a budget amendment for those funds to become available. Correct.
And one thing I would just point out to you, as you, I know that the budget thing is, is a key thing as far as allocating dollars. I did talk to Mike Bell today, and he'd be flexible with us, so I mean, if we want to get to a point where you wanted to budget for that for our next fiscal year
Thank you.
the city would not have to pay any of those, of those dollars until, or allocate any of those dollars till our next budget cycle, if that would make the council more, more comfortable. So it's kind of a pay-as-you-go type of deal. I think SCDC could lead the way as far as the upfront cost. And give you guys an opportunity then to allocate those dollars in the next fiscal year.
Exactly, yes.
So Kurt, what would be the timeline for the project in regards to just the RDG part?
Depends on how quickly we really want to move. They'll, they'll kind of lead us. I mean, our whole preliminary design phase of the Event Center probably took us over a year. Now, this isn't as big of a project, so I could see us moving relatively, a little bit quicker on that. You know, Mike Bell didn't give us a specific timeline. It's just really gonna depend on how we can kind of coordinate those meetings, and how those conversations go, and ultimately, how many amenities we want to put in there, because those are all going to determine the length of the process, so.
So pretty much immediately after our city approval?
We could get started, yep, we could pull the tr, our, our intention would be to get the process moving relatively quickly. You know, we get to the end of the preliminary design phase, we can, we can hold on to the project, and when we have the funds available on the city side to move forward, we can pull the trigger at that time. There's nothing that says we have to, when we get through the preliminary phase, have to move forward on the project at that point.
Okay.
We can wait, so.
As far as, as far as the scope of RDG, is, right now, way I, way I understand it, it just looks to me as to be development. Will the estimates that they come with, will those be estimates, or will those actually be bids that they're involved with?
Estimates.
There'll be estimates. Yep. There'll be a bid process, similar, and Todd can probably elaborate on that a little bit more.
Tom, this scope
Yeah.
is gonna get you pretty pictures
Mm-hmm.
and approximate square footages.
Okay.
You're then going to pay somebody else at a later date, if you decide to move forward, to actually design every building, every fishing structure, every whatever.
And that would become a city expense then, at that point, then?
So
I would assume so.
Parts and rec?
Or, or, yeah.
Tom, you were part of the process of the
I was.
dream of the Event Center.
Yeah.
Where we met, and we put dots on everything of what we, right?
This, I remember this drawing very well
Sure.
because it was, it was really the scope of the overall project for the Event Center.
Right. So this is similar to that, where we get together, we dream, what more could be, working with our master plan, what more can be, get the public endpoint, input to come up
Right.
with a picture and idea.
Yeah, I do remember.
Following through with the dream.
I do remember that, and I do understand that part.
And you remember how many years ago we met?
But I don't remember, I don't know how the city took over on it.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yep. So it gets us to what the dream, the visual.
Right. Right. To just, I guess one thing that I would caution or, or make sure we're aware of, is that if, if we come up with a plan, and there's some local fundraising component for that plan put together, and if at some point there's a grant that's gone after, we need to stick with the plan. Because it's going to be, my assumption is, it's going to be multiple years before this plan can become ready for construction
Absolutely.
and to be built, because Ange, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't currently have the, or we probably shouldn't currently bond for any funds
Right.
to do this.
Yep.
But, so when we, so Kurt talks about proper planning, and I get it, plan ahead, have it shelf-ready, but then understand, when we go into this, if we decide now, and four or five years from now, it's go-time, if we change the whole plan, we've wasted our time
Mm-hmm.
to some degree. Because you might be talking four or five years before funds are available
Correct.
to construct, depending upon the magnitude of this project. I mean, are we gonna end up spending a half million dollars, or two and a half billion dollars?
Right.
And therein, I think, lies the value of the study, because now we have a target, now we can start to plan how we're gonna get there.
Assuming you don't change your mind.
Well, I mean, but that, this starts the process. I mean, there's, I mean, we have a plan. I mean, that plan certainly can be altered somewhat along, tweaked along the way.
I would caution you to fundraise for something you don't know if you're gonna exactly build, which you're gonna fundraise.
Well, we don't even know fundraising is a part of it or not, at this point. I think this just
But it will be.
gets that conversation started.
I could serve.
I would agree with Todd on, on that aspect as far as fundraising, but we're gonna have to look at it from a city budgeting perspective, and where we're gonna lay this thing in at, once we edit the estimates in the, in our hands.
You know, there, there's some very random, grab number out of the sky numbers in our capital improvement plan.
Okay.
But they're nothing more than, we know we want to develop this park at some point, so here's a placeholder, it's on the plan. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen that year, it could come forward, it could go backward. And this would help finalize those numbers, to your point, Greg.
Yes. And that probably started back when we were talking about the pavilion.
Yeah, that thing's, but those, that placeholder gets shuffled back every year.
Correct, correct.
It, it just kind of floats around there, depending upon where we end up.
This just brings a little more maturity to, so.
And clarity.
And clarity. So, okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, comments?
I voiced it this morning at our SCDC meeting, I'm gonna voice it here, too, so it's on the record, but as far as public input, I think it would be a great idea if we could incorporate a special session for kids. I know a year, 26 or whatever odd years ago, when Playground Paradise was built, they actually went to the schools and got the kids' input. And when you talk parks, you're talking kids.
Absolutely.
And so if there is a way to get that, I mean, build excitement for it that way, build enthusiasm, I would encourage us to do that. I, I don't know how Mike is, Mark, Mike is gonna do that, but
Yeah. And Corey Meyer at the meeting this morning, too, encouraged that as well, and to be, help us along that process as far as getting those students involved a little bit, too. Yeah, it's a good idea.
That'll be fun, yeah, to get their input. Thank you, Greg, for sharing that. Thank you for presenting.
Good.
So, we know where the funding can come from. SCDC will pay for, and, and again, it's not to exceed, so we will not be putting more than 10,000 towards this agreement with RDG. So if there's no further discussion, is this something we want to make a motion on to approve, the scope of services and the cost share with the SCDC?
I would like to move that we do proceed with the cost sharing agreement with the SCDC, per the dollars figured, and if we can utilize the plan that, or the fund that Ange was talking about, and that works
Oh, that parks planning? I forget which one.
Whether it's a budget amendment, budget amendment, or deferring it to the next fiscal year, whatever, whatever's convenient, however that works, we'll let you take care of the mechanics, but
Well, if it's a budget amendment, you'd have to approve it at a later date.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, as a budget, yes.
That would come out.
So if we would need to do that within this budget year, otherwise
Yes.
we can plan for that for next year.
So otherwise, those funds wouldn't be available till July of '19.
Yep.
Right. And you guys, it would get approved this winter.
Mm-hmm. And that plan is totally acceptable with RDG. So if it's budgeted for next fiscal year, and not worry about the budget amendment this year, totally acceptable.
Sorry, Greg, I need some clarification
What's that?
on that motion, because you kind of went
I'm sorry, Tom.
which way do you want to go?
Yeah.
That fits the program.
Whatever is the cleanest and the simplest, and for you, I give, I, to me, the budget amendment, we get it taken care of, and it's done, the bill's paid. But if that's
If that's too much.
a major hurdle
That's another
and it works better to wait
That's another motion, no. I think that's another motion on its own.
Well, or we give her the discrepancy to decide, which is easiest.
Well, we have, we're gonna have to vote on the amendment.
At a different time.
We do that a different time. That comes back. The budget amendment
Yes.
comes at a different time.
If that's the route we go, we vote on it.
We don't need to do that if we're making a commitment for an expense.
My preference would be that it's part of next year's budget.
There you go. She would prefer that it's part of next year's budget.
Then that, let that
So your motion is?
That would be my motion, then. I defer to your judgment on that.
So go ahead with the scope of services, cost share, and we will plan that for next year's budget, and you'll cover the first portion.
Yep, yep, you bet.
Okay.
Which, depending upon the rate we go, it could, it could fall into there anyway.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we have a motion
As far as the scope, the plan?
Yeah, as far as the timeline with RDG.
To Tom's question, we don't know. I mean, it could be not, it could be a year before we're completed with the preliminary phase, and that's when the balance will be due, anyway, so.
I would support that motion.
Okay, thank you. Let's get a second. All right. So we're good with that, as far as financially covering that until we can, any other discussion? Tom, I see you, yes?
Just not to belabor the point, but so I understand it better. If we're making a motion right now to approve an expense, how do we do that if we don't approve where the expense is gonna come from?
We're gonna put it into next year's budget as part of the motion, and we'll take it out of that future Parks Planning Account.
Okay.
That was part of the motion.
So that's part of the motion?
That was part of the motion, to agree, to approve this
Very good.
scope of services with RDG, this cost share of 20, up to, not to exceed 20,000, our person will be 10. That 10,000 will go into the 2019, 20 budget, coming out of the account of the Future Parks Fund.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I didn't even have a dunk tank, and I can't hear on this here.
I cut my ears so I can hear you. Okay. Motion, second discussion, roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Camel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Thank you, and thank you, Kurt. Number five, we have a discussion regarding some nuisance and dangerous buildings, and Mike, I will take the lead. I, you would give us updates, some reviews, recommendations, et cetera, however.
Sure, we've been talking about green space, and this would be the opposite. We need to have some properties that we've been working on as a city. 428 West Park Street, 1401 South Second Avenue, and 300 Island Avenue. And they're large enough projects that we're at a juncture in which the city council should give us additional direction before we, and by we, I mean city staff and myself, go further down the abatement road, if you will. So, the first one is 428 West Park Street. If you're familiar with what used to be the Redemption Center, there was a fire in 2016. There's been no repairs or demolition done, and the titled owner is nowhere to be found. We've attempted certified mailings, we've attempted emails, we've attempted publication, and there's been no response to the notice of unsafe building and notice to abate nuisance. This is a property that we believe, we could prove, is abandoned per the definition in the Iowa code, which would allow the city to take title and do some cleanup. Cleanup, of course, costs money, and preliminary estimates are in the neighborhood of $28,000 to $30,000 because of the presence of asbestos. There is an opportunity potentially to offset some of those costs because of interested individuals wanting to acquire the property. Of course, there is no firm commitment from anybody for that at this point. It would be my recommendation that we start the process to acquire title because there seems no reasonable likelihood of ever locating a responsible owner, and the condition of the property speaks for itself. So questions about that property?
I have one. In paragraph 1A, the last sentence, the property has been sold on a tax sale, but a tax deed has not yet been issued. Who was it sold to?
I don't have that information directly with me. I could find it if you wanted. It's a entity that, like, is fairly normal in this, an investor that bids at tax sale, makes an investment with the hopes of someone redeeming, in other words, getting their property back by paying the back taxes plus some interest. But it's not an entity or an individual that I recognized by name. For instance, I got some information on these properties. One of them, I think, was from Illinois, and the other ones also were not names that I recognized. It's similar to what happened with Poochy's, I think, where we had an investor acquire it and then never heard from them.
Right, and then the investor and company had nothing, so it was essentially another non-responsive owner.
Mm-hmm.
With the tax sale process, they have a certain period of time where they can hold on to what's called a certificate of purchase. At some point, they can provide notice to the owner of record, lien holders of a record, give them a 90-day window to redeem or pay the taxes that they've put into it, plus interest, and then they, those people could get their property back. If no one redeems, they can take the tax sale deed at that point and become the owner. They have, I think, until either 2020 or 2021 to do that. And if they don't, which is what happened with the building on Island, after a certain period of time, basically the county no longer pursues that, and it's a failed tax sale, and it kind of sits in limbo. That one, for instance, has been sitting in limbo since the late 1980s.
So they're speculating on it, basically. So Mike, you write in here about the potential of some liability for other real estate taxes. Do we have any idea what that would look like?
Yeah. Per the information from the treasurer, the current amount of taxes that would have to be paid to redeem the property are about $1,608. If you go through this petition for abandonment successfully, there is a provision per which the tax sale gets canceled, which leaves the city with less exposure for taxes. Not complete abatement, or complete non-exposure, but less. The County Board of Supervisors does have the right, when the city takes title via this procedure, to compromise the taxes. That means they could, per their own motion, say, "City, you don't have to pay." I can tell you that that has not been the Board of Supervisors' approach in the past, and that approach is subject to debate on whether it's appropriate or not.
So $1,608 would be the maximum exposure?
Actually, the tax sale amount, it's a bit confusing because you end up with two different things going on. You have the amount attributable to the tax sale, which is roughly $1,100 right now, and the balance is taxes that haven't gone to tax sale yet. The petition procedure requires, if the city gets it via this petition, requires them to cancel the tax sale, which would eliminate about $1,100, my understanding, leaving about $400 to $500 that would still be owed. And of course, those will continue to accrue from year to year, and that number could get bigger. So in the overall scope of things, the amount of back taxes on this particular property are not as significant as you see on some.
Okay, thanks.
And it gets fairly complex, so you want the treasurer to sign off on the final deal, but that's what it looks like right now.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
This petition process, you need to figure on probably a three-month time period, for sure, because there's additional notices that have to go out, and it has to go through the court system. But if you would start now, you can at least move towards acquiring title and giving yourself some options with the property in the next several months. You know, and we have had other properties where we haven't acquired the title, and instead we've done the demolition, and you can assess that demolition cost basically in the same manner that property taxes are assessed. They're supposed to be paid like that. But if people aren't paying the taxes to begin with, that basically is an exercise that's futile.
Maybe that over is...
No, I think with this particular property, you're saying, if we acquire title as a city, and we take care of the demolition, and there's no way to offload the property and recoup, your maximum exposure is in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $35,000.
Great.
And I think you have to look at it as a worst-case scenario. We believe it to be markedable, but that hasn't happened yet.
You do have a note there, adjacent landowners have indicated any interest. Has the property been valued?
It's been valued in the sense that we know what it takes to get it to bare ground.
Right.
It sits on Highway 18 in a commercial district, surrounded by some other storage-type buildings, basically. I think it's either arterial commercial or commercial, is my best guess.
Probably arterial commercial, but I don't have a zoning map in front of me.
But right now, you have a burned-out building and have had since August 12 of 2016.
Right.
And I would also say that we've obtained one quote to give us a ballpark, but we haven't got competitive quotes yet at this point.
Correct.
And the question mark is still on asbestos abatement as well.
No, that is included in that quote.
It is now. You did confirm that.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for asking. That was confirmed and cleared up. That's roughly $9,000 of that cost.
Okay, so it does include it, and not what our notes says that...
It does.
It does not, okay. All right.
And, you know, going back to your discussion on the parks and money available, this is a project where you could start the petition, acquire title, but not necessarily complete it within the budget year based on funds available or not. Shawn Hutchinson, before his departure, did do some investigation with bond counsel about the ability of using TIF funding for these type of projects, and that potentially would be available with some amendments to the urban renewal plan.
Due to the removal of light, I believe.
Correct.
You know, I go back to the owners now. We haven't been able to locate them. How hard have we looked? I mean, I...
That's an excellent question.
And, and then the next question, my comment after this, are we gonna be trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip since they haven't, they walked away from it already?
In the legal system, you have to do what's called due diligence. We have, I believe, met the standard of due diligence. We've acquired addresses from the electronic document system on Iowa courts online. We've acquired addresses from mortgages and other public record sources. So I believe that we attempted six or more known addresses for these two partners, ranging anywhere from Iowa to Minnesota to, I believe, Tennessee. We found email addresses that were available through various means, non-responsive, and we published. So we have gone probably above and beyond what the courts would require to find somebody. In terms of whether they'd be able to pay, based on knowledge I've acquired through my career and the familiarity with these names, I would suggest to you that this would be a difficult collection.
Mm-hmm. I guess, after reading through these, I just don't like the precedent. We have, I guess we have a precedent established, and we just continue on, but that dilapidated property can go to pot, and the city comes, has to come in and clean up the mess. It's just...
That's true. You have a building, of course, that's one of them, and it's been there in that condition since 1987. So I guess the question is, where do you set the line for how long you can and will wait?
So with...
But that's, yeah, that...
Thirty years. Right, but we've acted on others sooner. The old Poochy building, the old bowling alley. And it's somewhat because of where they're located, you know, this is tucked back from the highway. It's not as much of an eyesore, probably, as some of those items, as high of priority, but it's still, it's still there. And so, I don't know. End up with the property. If we've done all we can do, and this is, is what it's gonna take to get rid of it, even so we have to do, I don't know.
And again, what we're looking for primarily today is whether you want us to start the legal process to move towards filing a petition for abandonment, which would culminate in the city taking ownership. That does not necessarily mean you're committing to doing the demolition in the near future.
No.
Right.
If at all.
But, but it does mean if we're gonna spend legal funds to move forward, we're probably quite serious about doing something.
Because then you also have a property that is dangerous in your name as a city.
So...
Would it, since all of these are gonna cost money, and they all have different levels of danger, would it be appropriate to discuss all three and then go back and take action on each one individually?
I was gonna ask if we could do that as well.
That's fine.
Does that, I mean, does that make sense to the council?
Because I kind of have a priority of what I deem to be the most dangerous, but that's my personal preference.
Well, with your permission, I'll talk a little bit about the second property.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Second property is 1401 Second Avenue, better known as the Sunset Motel property. This presents a unique challenge because the titled owner is deceased. As of October 28, 2016, nobody's been caring for the property in recent history. It came to our attention through law enforcement that various individuals were using the property for various, nefarious purposes. And we have attempted to contact who we believe to be next of kin, namely siblings and children. They all received a letter. Some of them responded and said, "We have no interest in this property." There was indication that there was perhaps a spouse or other significant other to whom this may have been will'd to, but there is no records in the Iowa court system of any probate ever having been opened.
Okay.
So we have a piece of property that is sitting there, and no one on the immediate horizon taking any interest in acquiring it, at least through the family. There has been a person who has inquired and said, "I would like it." The condition of this property is probably not as serious as others. There's been attempts, I think, to board it up to some extent. There's been some water damage. We bring it to your attention because unattended properties don't fix themselves, and it is a property of fairly significant size. I think with this particular piece, there's a question of what's the best use for this area, and is this a property where if the city acquired it, is there an opportunity perhaps to apply for grants if there's a better public purpose for that ground? I don't know what that would be, but perhaps with some brainstorming and thinking outside of the box, there might be some ideas worth pursuing. And Todd, or Chief Balkma, or others who know a little bit more about the condition, please chime in.
Well?
I would say the actual home itself isn't horrible. It was just recently redone after they had that fire. I believe there are still stickers on the windows from the new windows that were put in it. Obviously, there's damage inside the house as well, but, but the house may have some value. The motel rooms themselves are complete garbage, in my opinion.
Yeah. If you take a look at some of the grants that are available, I did a brief survey of them. There's been some awarded even in our county. They tend to be successful when there's some type of community purpose or public purpose for which you're gonna acquire the property and recondition it to. I don't know, but simply acquiring it and passing the property along may or may not solve your issues long-term.
We are currently knock, mowing, slash knocking on this property once every two weeks.
Say it again?
We are currently maintaining the property to some degree as far as weeds and grass because of eyesore nuisance.
So, so is there a safety consideration that needs to be discussed on this property right now as it stands?
The street department actually came and boarded up the doors that had been kicked in or whatever, and so to the best of my knowledge, I believe it's secure right now, both the house as well as the motel rooms.
The only thing I'll add to that is, we've done that with other properties in the past, and the boards only last until we quit showing up, and then they, when somebody wants in bad enough, they're back in, and we're there, and we board up again.
Yeah.
And then they kick them down, and then we go back, and we board up again. I mean, it's Band-Aid. It's a temporary Band-Aid.
I would agree with that.
A couple other points, and then we can move forward to the other one. If you acquire it, that doesn't mean necessarily that you have to demolition everything on the property, because there are different conditions. And on this particular piece, the tax implications are a little bit more significant. Total outstanding taxes to date are $11,432. The tax sale portion is roughly $3,160. And again, the tax sale portion is the one that has to be canceled per the code if you acquire title. The remainder is in the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, and that cannot be guaranteed. Questions about this property?
So is there any legal liability against anyone at this point? You make note of a Ms. Bonales who has 95% control.
That's allegedly. That's what we were told by a family member.
Okay.
My search of the marriage records, I believe, turned up a different name, and the records show a divorce and a remarriage, and the current status of that person, I have no idea.
Okay. So the title is still in the name of the deceased?
Yes. I suppose we could explore the creative opportunity to open up the probate ourselves, but in any event, right now, there's nobody watching guard other than the city of Sheldon, as far as we know.
Correct.
Ready to talk about 300 Island?
I am, counsel.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. I give you, this is known as the Thermocell Building. Thermocell, Inc. is a corporation that was administratively shut down by the Iowa Secretary of State, I believe, in 1987, and we did attempt to notify the persons, a person listed on Iowa Secretary of State of the issue through a notice, and through their attorney, they disclaimed any interest in the property. The corporation is just a shell and defunct, so that's a dead end. I will let Todd speak to the condition of this property. I think it's fair to say we believe this to be the most dangerous of the three.
Agreed. And Lyle would agree with that as well.
Can you maybe explain that a little bit, to the extent necessary, to give the council a full picture here?
Roof is gone. Walls have holes in them or falling down. The building is fairly easily, fairly easily accessible right now. There are large pits in the basement that have water in them. There are certainly, the building is certainly a danger to anybody around it, or if anybody was to enter, would not be advised.
This is another one we've boarded up, that they find a way in.
I don't know how many times we've boarded up. I'll be honest with you, the, the west wall has a fairly large hole in it right now, and crack going up it, that, in my opinion, is getting larger, and I pretty much refuse to send any city staff there to cover that hole up, because I don't want the wall to end up on them. Yeah, that one. But that hole is substantially larger now.
It's bigger than this.
Yeah.
Crossed.
It's a hotspot for pictures to be taken, too, which is not safe either.
This one is in a unique position tax-sale-wise. This is the property that, after failed tax sales, there's a provision that basically allows to go back to the county. The county, for obvious reasons, didn't want to take title. It could assign the certificate or allow the city to take title, but then there's not an automatic cancellation of the taxes that are owed. I think you would find that the treasurer would be very interested in having this issue resolved. It would be up to the Board of Supervisors ultimately to decide what to do with those taxes. It was represented to me that the exposure the city would face there would be in the neighborhood of $3,300. More significant than that is the current estimate for removal, which is in the neighborhood of $154,000.
Oh, my gosh.
The unique situation we find ourselves in here is that there may be a corporate friend of the community that would potentially be interested in helping to fray those costs. We're trying to set up a meeting to see what that would look like exactly, and I think at this point, we would need to know if the city is willing to invest in moving that process forward with some type of contribution. How that would be structured remains to be seen, but we would want to do it in such a way that we are sure that the demolition doesn't, does in fact occur, because we do believe this to be a very dangerous building. believe this to be a very dangerous building.
I would agree that this, you know, when we look at these nuisances, I'm thinking of safety, and I would agree, the Thermocell Building would be the number one on my radar that I'd love to see that taken care of first. You know, I'm not sure how and where the funds would come from, but I see that as safety, you know, not only is it nuisance, but the safety issue, the neighborhood of children there. And that's why I would put, my second concern would be the Sunset Motel, just because of the community, the family community, the neighborhood that's around there. So I look at that as a safety concern too, but this Thermocell's, it's been on the radar for a long time. So 154, I've always wondered, why can't we just push it in the hole? But I know we can't do that.
And I, I'm not asking to commit to a number, but I need to know if it's worthwhile to see if we can partner with somebody, and then what they would be willing to do, and we can come back at that point and say, this is, this is the opportunity.
This potential partner would also like to acquire the land then as well, possibly?
And, yes, definitely, which would put it back on the tax rolls and be kept up by somebody else.
And I think it's fair to say that this, well, at least I feel like this partner has more interest, more serious interest than maybe some of the others, simply because that cost estimate in front of you is not something the City of Sheldon acquired. That's fair, isn't it?
They, they went out and got it.
They, they went out and got it themselves.
Yeah, they incurred the expense of getting these quotes.
Correct.
So they know very well what, what the, what's at stake.
The other quote is something we acquired, this property. They've come to us and said, "Here's what it'll take to get rid of it."
Hmm.
So they're...
We believe that they are operating in good faith and are worthy of ongoing discussions with them.
I mean, what kind of participation were they, I mean, 50-50 or 90-10 or?
We're asked for clarification, and we don't have that answer at this point. I mean, they understand that the city has limited resources for things of this nature. Unfortunately, it's no value to the city really for that property, and it's a very large price tag to fix up.
Since this is a, this, since we're concerned from, about this property from a safety perspective, is there any idea on how quickly all this could happen? Because I think there's, there's value in that.
Their goal was originally stated to take care of it in this calendar year. Whether that's still realistic, I can't sell you, but they, they were wanting to do it sooner than later.
That would be encouraging, because otherwise it would just be our liability until that...
Yeah, and again, we would want it structured in such a way that we were assured that the demolition would in fact occur.
Right.
Because otherwise, why go through this exercise?
Correct.
And to answer your question earlier, Mayor, about just shoving it in?
Yeah.
I guess I don't have 100% confirmation on this, but I'm assuming there's environmental reasons that would stop us from doing that.
That's why sometimes I wish a good old wind would come up and knock it down.
Well, not to mention it is directly adjacent to the Canadian Pacific Railroad right-of-way, which does not make that easier either.
Sure.
So what a nutshell our options are, to do nothing and let it time work itself out, and then maybe nothing will ever happen, maybe we could be sitting there another 30 years and the building will still be laid in as a pile of rubble. Or...
Maybe.
We start the process and see what that shakes loose.
One question I guess I have, does the city have any liability if something happens to someone in that building because we don't have codes to this or anything like that? Or because we haven't done anything to this point?
That's a very good question. You won't find anything in the code that says, "Because you refused to take the tax sale certificate, you are therefore liable." But if something would happen and somebody got hurt very seriously or died, you can assume that attempts would be made to collect from sources with money. The county, the city are the two obvious targets. Whether it would ultimately be successful, it would be a difficult case, but I think there is no reasonable likelihood of recovery from anybody else.
I'm sorry. I'd like to say then that we begin, or you continue with this possible corporate interested party, to see what level or what percentage they would like to, or be willing to share in that. Begin this process, because I think this is the number one building in our community that has the biggest safety, you know, concern. It's been on our radar at least nine years, if not longer, you know. I was in the building eight years ago.
What, what kind of tools are available for dangerous and dilapidated?
As far as grants?
Well, yeah. What other sources are there?
Sean Hutchinson put together a whole list of possibilities, and I can circulate those if you would like. It's basically a grant process, either through the DNR or other agencies. I think Sutherland recently acquired one, and they range in amounts. But again, the question typically is, if you acquire it and fix this up, what are you gonna do with it? Is it gonna be some type of community building? Is it gonna be a park? Is it gonna be housing? What, what's your plan? And this property doesn't really lend itself to anything like it, I don't think. Do you, Todd?
No, I don't. It's, it's actually not that many square feet, the lot itself isn't. Like you mentioned before, borders the railroad, but it's not big enough for something that would lend itself to needing railroad access, the, you know, a building that, oh, it's wasteland, in my opinion.
That's why I think if this interested party is willing to meet us somewhere...
Matter of fact, in today's zoning ordinance is, I think you would struggle to build much of anything on there because of setback requirements and whatnot.
It's probably destined for open storage or something like that.
I, I would tend to agree.
Yeah.
So do you need to know how much we're willing to set aside to...
Not at this point.
Pace, right now, you're looking for direction?
At this point, based on what we know, I, I need to know if the, the city is interested in partnering, if it's feasible. I mean, if the city's response today was, let wind and rain and snow take its course over the next undetermined number of years, then I wouldn't bother setting up any further discussions.
And if I knew that no children or teens or people would ever enter that building, I'd say let Mother Nature take its course, but because we have a lot of families in that area, and they've tended to be on the premises off and on, I think we don't need to have that on our shoulders, and that safety concern needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
This does not have to be an all or nothing approach, does it? We can bite these off one at a time if we want.
I would think so.
The fact that we have a corporate partner, partner that's interested...
And in this calendar year, possibly, if, seeing that.
Maybe it makes sense, we just take baby, smaller steps, not baby step, but smaller steps, that's the worst one, that's the one that's been on an issue for the longest, and then see where it goes from there. I, I just, I'm, the thought of, it sends a message, just lets your buildings go and the city will end up taking care of you on it, and we gotta put more teeth on the back end of it then or something, because that's the part that...
So that makes a valid point, Greg. That's my opinion, partially how we got here today. We've, we've known about this Thermocell a lot of years, but when it come time, it was like, holy crap, that's gonna be a lot of money. Well, then pretty soon, the building on the highway joined its list, and now the building on the old Sunset Motel joined the list. So now we have to sit here with three in front of us, when 30 years ago, we could have, or 20 years ago, we could have dealt with, with one.
Right.
And I've been around for 20 years, so I mean, you, you see it coming.
And right now, I think this is our, our biggest safety concern, given the location that it's at with, with all the families in the area.
So would it be appropriate to table an action today in lieu of waiting for the additional information from MICA as far as what the partner will be, what that partnership would look like?
I don't have any concern with that. I mean, the other two, you have the information, you can mull over it, you can go drive out there and take a look now and get a better feel for it, and have a better understanding of what the issues are. And, yeah, realistically, if we would move forward on those two things, those petitions don't get filed and processed overnight anyway, so if we need to get a better understanding of what the Thermocell...
Right.
...options are, we can move forward from there.
So with that, do we need a motion to table it then?
I don't think there's a motion pending. I mean, the agenda was discussion, you've had the discussion, and as you do many times, you discuss and take no action.
So I'd like, I would like to see, you know, what the discussions come back, MICA, after you, you talked with this corporate interested party, to see where they stand and what timeframe financially.
So Mayor, outside of that, can you just keep it on the agenda then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Park planning's fun, nuisance abatement's not.
Right.
Yeah, and I would remind you that you did budget a limited amount for dangerous buildings in this past year. Obviously not enough to cover these three.
Nope.
But reflected a priority of yours.
Question would be, okay, we, we allotted that much for this budget, what did we allot last year and what happened to that?
I'm not sure you had anything budgeted last year.
Okay.
You had to...
Yeah. Okay.
I think this came out of your discussion, your long-range planning, is that cleaning up the corridor and other things were of enough importance that you wanted a line item in the budget, is my recollection.
Yep.
Do you have enough information, or are you, are you at a do-nothing spot based on our discussion now? We're at a do-nothing spot.
No, I'm not. In, in part, I know that you have an interest in seeing if we can figure something out on the Thermocell. That's what I needed to know.
Yes.
I mean, I didn't want to go to a meeting and say, you know, maybe they will, maybe they won't. I can now say that they're committed if it is, if there's a financially feasible way to do it.
Right. Absolutely. And I'm interested too, you know, they said they would like to have it completed in 18, is, is that something they could extend into the next calendar year? So you do those conversations that need to be done, and we'll bring it back to the agenda when that time is ready, when you have that information for them.
We'll do our best to keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you very much. Um, where are we? We have another meeting to go to. Ah, we are here. Okay. Next is comments. Anything, Lyle? Okay, Kurt, we've talked to you, Council to my right, Todd?
I guess projects, I can give you another quick update on projects. Floyd has essentially been at a standstill since the last council meeting. Wastewater Project has moved along nicely. They've done another couple of quite large wall pores in the SPR unit themselves, so continue to be happy there. I did receive a report from Andy Mason last week that the snow removal truck that we were supposed to get a year ago may show up this week and get ready for final inspection. So that, that was good news. 16th Street continues to lag along. As of after today, there is eight working days left on the project. Two weeks ago, I told you there was a realistic chance, I thought they could make it if they showed up and come to work. This project will end up in penalties. Period. They, they have no chance of making their completion date at this point, so...
Will they get it done before winter?
Farm to market road.
Yeah. We will, we continue to communicate them, I continue to communicate with the engineer. We can be as upset as we want, there is nothing I can do or the engineer can do that can force them to come to work. All we can do is enforce penalties on the backside. I had that discussion with the engineer this week. We've had limited success with that in the past. He feels like we have a reasonable case, especially with the DOT on our side. In case you're wondering, the penalties are $1,000 a day they're late. So we will continue to urge them to come to work. That's all I can, that's all I can do at this point.
Who is the contractor on this project again?
Omni Engineering Doing Businesses, OMG Midwest.
Well, we'll remember that. Thank you, Todd. Anything, Sean, Pete, Ann? Good job, everybody that helped out with Liberty over the weekend. Real iffy for a long time, but I think that SDC did wonderful pulling together plenty of volunteers to put on a great event, so thank you, a safe event, and Mother Nature decided at the last minute to cooperate with us. So it was a good year, so I, I thank you and everybody down there for the wonderful weekend that we had and the fun that we had. Next time, earplugs for duck diving. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Support.
Thank you, and a roll call.
Hey, Gers.
Hi.
Keels.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.